Hi, everyone, and welcome to our community conversation about making all Minnesota students have an equal right to a quality public education. I am really happy to be here with the authors of the amendment, Chief Justice Allen Page, and Minneapolis Federal Reserve Bank President Neil Kashkari. I hope you are here to help our communities learn more about this, and we'll have the opportunity to hear and discuss and question the proposal and see if we can meet the education needs of all of our kids finally in our state. I, your co-host, am Alana Oswald, a lifelong Duluthian. I'm beginning my sixth year on the Duluth School Board. I'm an educator and a parent. I am also a pretty simple person that's been working to make sure all my community members experience the same opportunities and rights that have eluded some through no fault of their own. Through my nearly 20 years of working, trying to tackle the achievement gap, I was inspired to get my teaching license in 2018 and master's in teaching in 2013 and continue to bring equity conversations into school district business on the school board today while working within various community organizations focusing on educating our kids. So I'm just going to pass this now off to my co-host and other fabulous person, St. Cloud School Board Member Natalie Ringsma.
Thank you so much, Alana, and thank you to everyone that's out there today that's coming to listen and see what this is all about and see if this is a way that we can really begin to take care of all of our students in not only central Minnesota where I'm located in St. Cloud, but all over the state. My third year on the board just started, and I have three students in St. Cloud Public Schools. They are two high school boys and a middle school girl. And like Alana, I am also blessed with an education background. So I used to be a middle school choir teacher in Georgia, but then moved back here since this is where both of us are from in our family. And so we love to have kids in St. Cloud Public Schools, but when I sit on the board, I know that, you know, my kids have a lot of privilege that other kids do not in a lot of areas. And I really would look for anything that we can have and that we can use and tools we can use in order to make sure that all students can survive and thrive in our public education system. As a public educator and as a mother of public education students, there's nothing I don't want to hear about if it's going to help some of our students. So thank you again for being here today. We thank you to Justice Page and Neil Kashkari for telling us all about this and hosting this space so that we can learn a little bit more. So I think from there, I'm supposed to turn it over either to Neil or just Neil, right? Yes, all right. Thank you, Neil. Take it away, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Alana, Natalie, and everybody who's tuned in this evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you. We really appreciate it. I'll speak briefly, and then I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Allen. So I've been president of Minneapolis Fed for five years. One of my big surprises when I moved to Minnesota was to discover the achievement gap that you all have been working on for so long. You know, I came here, I knew that Minnesota was a very successful state in many, in many ways. On average, the schools perform well, yet the averages mask the fact that there are these terrible achievement gaps, and they're racial gaps, but it's not just racial gaps. There are also socioeconomic gaps. So low-income Minnesota kids all around the state are badly trailing their middle class and their more well-to-do peers. And I asked my researchers, we've got a brilliant team of PhD economists at the Minneapolis Fed, I said, "Help me understand these gaps. Help me understand what has been done to try to close them, and what can we learn from other states?" And what the research showed us is that over the past 20 or 30 years, there have been many good faith attempts to improve outcomes for all kids in Minnesota, to close these gaps. Many people are working really hard at this problem. But if we're being honest with each other, we have to admit that we've made zero progress in the last 20 or 30 years in closing these gaps. And when you look around the country, that is not true everywhere. There are some states where they have made real progress in lifting the education outcomes for their low-income kids and for their children of color. So this is not an impossible problem to solve. So as I looked at that, it occurred to me that politics seems to be getting in the way, that Republicans have their preferred solutions, Democrats have their preferred solutions, they don't really agree. So what do they do? They make minor changes around the edges instead of fundamentally updating and transforming our education system to meet the needs of all of our children. So about two years ago, I reached out to Justice Page. I reached out to him because I knew he had spent 22 years on Minnesota's Supreme Court, and I knew that he had a lifetime of passion for education equity, having he and his wife founded the Page Education Foundation. And I reached out to him to ask him, "Is there a way we could use the law to break through the political logjam and literally put children first? And look at everything through the eyes of, does this help children get the quality education that they deserve?" And we started working together, and we looked at the Minnesota Constitution, the Minnes- all 50-state constitutions have some form of education provision. We found out that Minnesota's education provision in the Constitution was written in 1857, and it hasn't changed since 1857. And just as a quick reminder, in 1857, slavery was still legal in much of America. And that education provision basically says children have the right to access an adequate education system. Well, what is an adequate education system? What does that mean? That means a system that, on average, is adequate. For some, it's terrific. For others, it's lousy. And if your child gets access to that system, whether they're in the top of the system or the bottom of the system, their rights have been met based on the current Constitution today. It turns out some other states have updated their constitutions to say, "You know what? Adequate is not good enough. We should aim for quality education, and we should do that for all of our children." And so we realized that by amending the Constitution, we could bring it into the 21st century and literally put children first and focus on outcomes for children and make that the highest priority of the state. So let me, with that brief intro, let me turn it to Allen, and I think we have the language that we can bring up, and Allen can walk you through it after he talks about his own perspective on this.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you for having us this evening. You know, I come to this question about how we're, how we can best deal with the failures, quite frankly, of our education system as it relates to children of color, indigenous children, and poor children, from a perspective of someone who had parents who knew and understood the value and importance of education, somebody whose life has been enhanced in immeasurable ways by the education that I've received, and someone who has spent more than 50 years in schools and classrooms, talking to young children, kindergarten through 12th grade, about education, about their futures, about the value and importance of education, and how they can use education to achieve their hopes and dreams. And at the end of the day, for me, it's about justice, whether we're talking about social justice, racial justice, economic justice. It's about ensuring that every child has an opportunity to reach their fullest potential, whatever that is. And so when Neil called, I thought this was a great opportunity to, to actually make some real progress. We think that by amending Minnesota's Constitution, we can create a catalyst for real change. Think for a minute about the fact that our current constitutional language is from 1857. That means it was designed for a world that is totally different from the world that we live in today. But yet, we're still using that as the, as the model. And that model, it seems, is doing what it was intended to do, provide an adequate system. And in our current language, our current constitutional language is focused on the system. And so that, you know, some kids do well, some kids do poorly, but on average, it's a system that is adequate. And we think we can do better than that. And we think the problems that we face today are systemic problems. And if you're going to fix systemic problems, you have to change the system. You can't, we've tried reforms, people with great intentions and a lot of time, energy, and work and money have worked very hard to fix, to reform the current system. And clearly, it hasn't worked. Indeed, things have gotten better. So we've proposed that we change the constitutional language to read and to do two things, well, to do, first of all, to shift the focus from the system and inputs into that system to children, to include children. Indeed, we think that an education system that doesn't put children first is doomed to failure. If you think about what is the education system supposed to be doing? Educating children. Yet, when all the focus is on the system itself and not on the children being educated, that's problematic. And so we literally put children first. And let me just go through the language. All children have a fundamental right to a quality public education that prepares them with the skills necessary for participation in the economy, our democracy, and society. People often ask, what is, you know, when we say "all children," who are we talking about? Well, when we say "all children," we mean all children, whether they be urban children or rural children, suburban children, black children, brown children, indigenous children, wealthy children, poor children, able-bodied or disabled children, all children have a fundamental right. People also ask, well, when we, when we say, "What does quality public education mean?" Well, the, the language in the proposed amendment answers that question itself. Quality public education is an education that fully prepares children with the skills necessary for participation in the economy, our democracy, and our society. And then we have this provision that says, "As measured against uniform achievement standards set forth by the state." There is some concern that this language is really just a vehicle to constitutionalize the, the current measurement tools we use to stigmatize schools and children and identify their failures. That's not what its purpose is. Its purpose is to make sure that all children get measured by the same standard. We often want to conflate the measurement tool with the standard itself, but the standard is clear, full participate, being prepared for full participation in our economy, our democracy, and our society. And it will be up to our leaders, our families, our teachers, our educators, to determine what is the best measurement tool that we can develop. That's something that will take place after the amendment gets passed or can be done at the same time the amendment is in, is in the process of being enacted. And it, well, the, the, the next sentence, "It is a paramount duty of the state to ensure quality public schools that fulfill that fundamental right." Let me repeat that. It is a paramount duty of the state to ensure quality public schools that fulfill that fundamental right. That is to say, the state would have no higher duty than to ensure quality public schools that provided a quality education. And note that the burden is on the state. It becomes a state responsibility. It would have no higher duty. And there is nothing else in the Minnesota Constitution that rises to the level of a paramount duty. And so that, and I, well, I should also note that when I, when we talk about the state, we're talking about the legislature setting policy and funding, we're talking about the executive branch, and we're talking about the judicial branch. And you say, "Well, what does the judicial branch have to do with this?" Well, a civil right, a fundamental right without a remedy is not much of a right at all. And so this language would give children and families whose right to a quality public education has been denied, the right to seek vindication of that right. There are those who fear that this is just another vehicle to provide additional opportunity for rich families, because poor families won't be able to take advantage of our, our judicial system to have their rights vindicated. Well, the fact is, that's not the history of Minnesota. Indeed, it's not the history across the country. The times when schools or the, the, the system has resulted in litigation, it's always been poor families who have been trying to make the education system better for their families. And we've actually done some research from around the country, and where constitutions, state constitutions have been amended. For the most part, litigation hasn't gone up, and in some cases, it's gone down. So we don't think that that's going to be a particular problem here. Beyond that, the legislature will have the opportunity, along with parents and families and educators, and the governor and, and all stakeholders, will have the opportunity to define what this new educational system is going to look like. And if they get it right, and we think they will, there won't be a need for litigation. And so Neil and I are passionate about getting this amendment passed. And then the last thing I would say is, there are those who also think this last sentence is really just a, a vehicle for, or they, they think the whole amendment is just a vehicle for privatizing public education. Nothing could be further from the truth, beyond the fact that the amendment makes clear that we're talking about public education, something that the current constitutional language doesn't do. That last sentence, while it doesn't preclude the legislature and the governor coming together and going down the privatization road, it makes it very difficult. The current language, if the governor and the legislature so chose and enacted some privatization measure into law, they can do that now. And yes, they could theoretically do it under our proposed amendment. The difference being that this last sentence makes it clear that because it is a paramount duty of the state to ensure quality public schools, that privatization of public education in Minnesota under this amendment couldn't be done at the expense of public schools. This, this language would make me, this language makes absolutely clear that that is the case. So while they could do it, they couldn't do it at the expense of public education. And quite frankly, that is, I think, a, a pretty significant disincentive to, to even think about going that, or down that road.
Let me add two quick things, and then we'll turn it over to Alana, and we'll look forward to the Q and A, and we can take the text down. First, like, just a big picture, what are we talking about? We are talking about creating a civil right for every Minnesota child to get a quality public education, and then make, delivering on that right, the highest priority of the state. That's it. That's incredibly powerful. It's the people in Minnesota saying, "Public education is our highest priority for all of our children." That type of bold move, that type of commitment is what we believe is necessary to finally update our education system to meet the needs of all of our children going forward. And if you think about the history of our country, think about the history of civil rights. The biggest changes in our country's history have come through civil rights. Think about the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, the freedom of speech, the freedom of religion. Think about the 13th Amendment that abolished slavery, the 15th Amendment that gave freed slaves the right to vote, and the 19th Amendment that gave women the right to vote, and then ultimately Brown versus Board of Education. The biggest, most transformational changes in our country's history have come through civil rights. And so we want to take that track record and that power and say, "Now is time to put children first in education." Second quick thing, how do we amend the Constitution? We need a majority of the state legislature, the majority of the House and the majority of the Senate to pass it, and then it will go to the people, to the next general election, and then the people will vote on whether or not they want to amend the Constitution. We believe, we've seen some polling data that suggests that if the people of Minnesota are given the chance, that they will overwhelmingly support this. And so now we're working very hard to earn the support of the House and Senate, and the good news is, this is not partisan. We have liberal Democrats from the Twin Cities, and we have conservative Republicans from greater Minnesota joining together to say, "It's time we finally put our children first." We've united the CEOs of the biggest businesses in Minnesota with Attorney General Ellison, and they've all said, you know, "We don't normally agree on things, but we agree on this, and we're going to work together." So this is not all a partisan issue. This is about finally giving power to families that don't have power today, and that's why we think this is potentially so transformational. So thank you again, Alana and Natalie. We'd be pleased to turn it over to you for our Q and A and our discussion.
All right, everybody. If you have a question, you can take it right into the chat, and I will read them in the order that they appear. So I will, I actually have a question, so I will just start you off. In conversations that I've had with, with people, they worry about the accountability when it gets down to the local school board level, the systems in the local schools that already exist that support achievement gaps and, and the disparities that are happening. They question how that will actually change or have the opportunity to change with the passage of this amendment, or is that a completely separate issue?
I'm not quite sure that I understand the question, but let me, let me just say that this gives us the opportunity to redefine what education looks like in Minnesota. An opportunity that, you know, maybe there are some things from our current system we keep, maybe there are some things we don't. Maybe there are some things that, you know, work, but some things that don't. And what, what the system will look like 10 years down the road, I can't promise you. But it does give us the opportunity to bring us into the 21st century. I mean, if you think about it, the systems that we use today, they're from 1857. They were designed for a world, as I noted earlier, that is totally different from the world that we live in today. But yet, we are still confined by what the world looked like in 1857. And so I can't promise you, you know, what it'll look like, what will stay, what will But I can promise you that is, this gives us the opportunity to do things in a way that will allow all children to succeed, primarily because it puts children first. In, 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 in a sense, it gives every, every child an independent education plan. We educate individual children as opposed to focusing on what the system is doing.
And the only thing I would add to that is, it's not one size fits all. Like, one thing, just to state very clearly, neither Allen nor I are educators. So we don't come to this and say, "This is how you should be teaching your children. This is what your curriculum should be. This is what your class size should be." That's for the parents and the teachers to figure out what their kids need. And it might be different in different communities. The culture of the kids may be different, the local economy might be different, what they need is going to, the support that they need may be different. And we think that this amendment will allow you, working with your teachers and your parents, to figure out what your kids in your communities need in order to be successful. And we want to give you that power to do that.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have a question from Tamara. And how will this amendment be enforceable? How will education be funded? Any change based on this amendment?
Well, by making it, by making education a paramount duty of the state, it's going to say that nothing can come before education. And we all know intuitively that a quality education costs more than an adequate education. And so our expectation is this will lead to more funding rather than less funding over time. But it's not only about funding. Funding is an important piece of it, but it's not the only thing. And so all of the supports that are necessary, whether it's money, or it's more flexibility, or it's more counselors, you know, whatever the school needs or the kids need in order to be successful, this amendment can support that without prescribing it, without saying, "This is the answer." It's saying, "You figure out the answer, and the state needs to support you in delivering it."
Next question is from former school board member Nora Sandstead, who served proudly with me, and I miss her dearly. How does this constitutional change lead to actually lifting up the students who are struggling to succeed in their schools? And what are the steps between the passage of this amendment and the achievement gap closing for students around Minnesota?
Well, I, I would just reiterate what I said about educating individual children, putting individual children in the position to achieve their highest self, whatever that is. And that's something that we don't have today. And I will also say that it has been, it, it is a challenge to get the amendment on the ballot so the people can vote on it. That's a difficult process, but the real work, the really difficult work comes once it's passed, because that's when we have to sort out what, what works best. What, what are the policies and procedures and practices we need to put in place that will support children, individual children? Again, let me, I can't emphasize that enough. Right now, you know, our system looks at children- Right now, you know, our system looks at children as sort of a composite. And some do well and some do poorly. Under our, under our proposed amendment, we look at individual children and give them the support that they need. And, and, and that's where, for lack of a better way of describing it, that's where the things will take place. That's, that's where the achievement gaps will start to fall away.
Thank you for that. Next question from Jenny is if the amendment passes and someone litigates and wins, is there a possibility that schools somehow will suffer financially?
Well, you know, when Alan was walking through the language, one thing that's important to note is the obligation is on the state. And so it would be the state that would have to come up and say, you know, so let's say there's a case, somebody litigates and wins. That case is going to be against the state, not against you. Some, some school districts have said, oh, we're nervous. Are you going to impose, is this going to impose an unfunded mandate on us? Like, you know, special needs children, the schools have to do extraordinary things to support them. And on one hand, the schools will say to us, boy, our, our kids who have special needs are really doing well because we're providing them all of this support, but it's really expensive. And then it's hard for us to be able to do that. And so it feels like an unfunded mandate. This puts the burden on the state to deliver the resources that are needed to meet the needs of kids, not on the individual schools or on the school districts.
And now I have a question from Amy Bowden. Would this provide for further teacher development in terms of changing teachers' delivery methods?
I, I, I happen to think, again, I'm not a expert in education, but I happen to think that teacher training is likely to need some revision. Because right now, we, I talked about it before, we, we teach to sort of the cohort of children that are in the classroom. Teachers are going to have to be prepared to deal with individual children and support their needs, their cultural needs, their whatever, whatever needs there may be. So I think there will be some changes, likely to be some changes in teacher training practices. And in other areas. But I, I, I don't see that as a bad thing. I, I see that as enhancing teachers' ability to do what they love to do. And that is to see their students thrive.
You know, one example that we forgot to give, Alan and I have done a lot of these and sometimes I can finish his thoughts and sometimes he can finish mine. And sometimes we duplicate things and sometimes we forget things. So one thing that I think is an important case study, this is not the first constitutional amendment on education that we're proposing here. We looked at all 50 states and said, what have other states done to update their constitutions and what can we learn from them? And we'll give you an example. In the late 90s, the citizens of Florida voted to update their constitution and establish a quality standard that all students should get a quality education. After that was passed, the governor and the legislature came together and made sweeping changes to education in Florida. And they did a lot of things. They shrunk class sizes. They invested more in teacher preparation and teacher training. They had some accountability measures. They did a whole suite of things. Now, when they first passed that amendment in the late 90s, Florida and Minnesota were ranked around the same for achievement gaps in the mid 30s. 20 years later, Minnesota is still in the mid 30s and Florida has climbed to sixth, sixth best in the nation. Climbing almost 30 spots in 20 years. So this is not an impossible problem to solve, but neither Alan nor I can tell you, hey, here's the exact formula that we should apply to your school or another school or another school. What we're saying is we should make this the highest priority of the state and give the teachers and the parents the flexibility to design the education system that their children need in order to succeed.
That Florida example, the, the other message that it sends is that by changing their constitution, they created the catalyst for leaders to come together to make real change. And that, that should not be lost, that, that we have been doing essentially the same thing. Making changes here and there along the way, but not making any progress. By creating the catalyst, it's clear that real change can happen.
Great conversation. Thank you. The next question is from Dosselin. In discussion legislatures so far, legislators so far, what have been the biggest fears, pushbacks on the proposed amendment?
I, I'd say the, from, from legislator's perspective, the biggest fear is we don't want the court stepping in and doing our jobs. We, we in the legislature get to design education reform or education policy. And we don't want the court stepping in and we're afraid someone will go to court and then maybe a court will impose a solution. Maybe a court will order us to spend more money on education. We want to decide that. And when Alan and I have pointed out to them, after this passes, the governor and the legislature will have the first opportunity to come together with the input of the people to say, here's what we want the education system to look like going forward. Only if you fail to act, would there be a need for someone to go to court and ask for some type of a remedy? So when I said that, a very senior legislator in the Capitol said to me, well, then we don't need this. We can come together with the governor and make the changes anyway without this amendment. And we said, great, what have you been waiting for? Why haven't you done it? Why are we still here? And there wasn't an answer.
Can I just say one other thing about the courts? You know, courts make decisions based on facts. And if somebody brings facts to them that establish that their right to a quality public education has been denied, they will say that. If it hasn't been denied, they will say that. If it has been, they don't simply, you know, reach up into thin air and pull remedies out of the air. The parties will come to them with proposed remedies. And more likely than not, quite often courts do their best to get parties to settle on their own. So this, this fear of litigation is, I think, overblown. And, and, and in addition to that, if somebody chooses to litigate and prevails and it changes practices and procedures in a way that allows children to reach their full potential, isn't that what we're supposed to be doing? Isn't that what this is all about? And the cost of that, whatever it is, has to be significantly less than spending the money we're spending today and getting the results we're getting.
Thank you for that. We're, I, you know, as a school board member, I know we're already spending money in courts. And, you know, we have human rights cases against us and we're working to resolve them. I would have much rather have been working on them and succeeding without having that extra cost. But it made us do it. And so that's, sometimes that's what gets, what's, what if, the priority in a district becomes what's pushed hardest and, and that's the way to push. And that's very unfortunate because it uses up resources. And yet, um,
And it's not every case, but sometimes, you know, school districts decide to defend the indefensible. And it's not written that you have to do that.
You know, by the way, that's one of the things that Attorney General Ellison has said so emphatically. His job as Attorney General is to defend the state. He's like, how can I defend the indefensible?
All right, moving on to the next question, just so, just so everybody knows, if your questions, you know, you run out of time or, or your question doesn't get answered, there'll be instructions later on how we can figure out how to get those questions answered for you. So just keep writing them. Don't be afraid. Because I see we've got 17 more to go right now and I'm sure there'll be more after that. This question may have been answered before, but it'll give you a chance to reiterate some different aspects from Steve, who asks, so if we are going to create individual education plans for each student in a classroom, how will a teacher handle a classroom of 25 students with 25 different plans? It seems untenable and overwhelming. That is much more of a, of a, of a local district discussion. So I, I believe that you guys can speak to, to how that, uh, you've already spoken about what's happened and I don't know if you want to add anymore to that.
Well, it does raise the question about 25 kids in a class, doesn't it?
I think 25 kids in a class is amazingly small at this point, from many classes that, that I know that we have in our districts.
Well, exactly. Exactly.
Yes. Um, so from, from Eric, he writes, since we heard this proposal in January 2020, has anyone in the state legislature shown willingness to formally present the amendment to start the legislative process?
Absolutely. In fact, we had a bipartisan group of members in the House and the Senate introduce it in the last session. And we were making progress and then the COVID crisis hit and we had to, everything shut down, basically, the legislature and everything was focused on COVID till we pressed pause. And we're now ramping back up and approaching legislators again. At some point in this conversation, we should turn to Nevada and Rashad to talk about the work that they're doing. Because there's a group called Our Children Minnesota, which is a bipartisan group that is camp, forming a campaign and actually advocating for this at the Capitol in an organized way. They're going out and meeting with legislators and building support. So I don't know, Alana, if now would be the appropriate time to turn to Nevada. That may be a great way to get her involved in the conversation. Hi, Nevada.
Sure. Go right ahead, Nevada. Take over.
Thanks, Danielle, and thanks, Alana and Natalie. Alana Duluth feels like, sort of like hometown to me. I've done so much work up in Duluth, the northeast of Minnesota. So thank you for hosting this incredible conversation tonight. And Natalie, I'll have to say as well, St. Cloud, I have a piece of my heart there. I, I see in the chat, Tammy Calhoun was like making some comments and I've had the privilege of working with Tammy in the past year as well. So thank you. I mean, it's really great to see this like regional representation and school board members really coming together to talk about this and really digest this, this work. My name is Nevada Little Wolf and I am the Executive Director and Campaign Manager for Our Children Minnesota. You'll have to apologize if you hear the squeaky in the background. It's my puppy. I can't really address that right now, so you, you may just have to like hear the squeaky. I will say that we, like, I've been on since December and I, I'm really excited about the work that we're doing. We have launched our new website, ourchildrenmn.com. You can also get there at pageamendmentmn.com. I encourage everybody on the call to actually take some time, and we'll put it in the chat as well, to look at our website and, and what we're doing. And so I always talk about this kind of as like the Fed is like the research arm, the education arm, like, and, and they're all like really talking about the importance of this work. And then the work that we're doing is like really working with legislators, community members, coalitions to build support and to actually get this passed. And it's kind of like, what I would say is like the one-two punch. Like we need, we need to have like the research there, but then we also need to have the community and the coalitions involved to, to get this across the finish line. You know, listening to this conversation, I'm hearing a lot about like, you know, local school issues, concerns. And I was a former local elected official myself. I served on the Virginia City Council for 10 years. And, you know, local officials, Alana, Natalie, like, we don't like it when someone comes in and tells us like what we have to do, right? Like, we want to make sure that we have local control over our communities. And when I think about the Page Amendment, this is like really, you know, setting our constitution framework around the entire state of Minnesota to say that we actually believe that children deserve the right to quality public education. And the way that I think about this is that it is not going to cause any problems for local issues. In fact, I think it's going to actually bring more resources in to local communities around meeting the needs of children, families, teachers, administrators, and really giving you the tools that you need as Alan, Justice Alan Page has talked about and President Neil Kashkari has talked about is that, you know, there, there are things that need to happen that haven't happened yet. And, and we are, we are really pushing that boundary and asking what, why hasn't that happened? And we see this amendment as being the catalyst for that change. So I, I just really appreciate like everybody is like questions, comments, like, and thoughts and feedback on this. I want to turn it over to my colleague Rashad Turner, who has been really leading the effort around building coalitions across Minnesota to talk more about how we're like, how we're building this and how we're growing this, this work.
Say, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Nevada. You, you're hearing the squeaky at Nevada's house. You might hear children in the back bouncing a basketball. So I think we all know how this COVID's going, right? We've got some extra, extra late Zooms. And I think that, let me introduce myself. Rashad Turner, President, Executive Director for Minnesota Parent Union. We are leading grassroots efforts. And I think that the one thing I want to point out from something that President Kashkari said way back at the beginning of this event, we have seen many, many efforts to close our worst in nation education gaps. And I think that in those efforts, although, you know, well-meaning, well-intended efforts, they, they forgot about community. They forgot about the parents. They forgot about the folks who are impacted every day directly by our education system. So I think that we as Minnesota Parent Union, we came on board, obviously, because we know the positive impact of the Page Amendment and, and what it can do for our communities. And I think just thinking about some of the questions I've seen in the chat, there, there's a lot of work for us to do, y'all. All right. I mean, there's a lot of solutions out there, a lot of issues out there. And as you've heard tonight, the Page Amendment is the catalyst for change. But what our education system looks like after the Page Amendment is going to be up to each and every one of us as Minnesotans to come together, use our voices, come up with the solutions. But to get to that point, a- as you've heard, we need this catalyst. So our role is really getting a lot of parents involved, a lot of community members involved, continuing to build the coalition of organizations, individuals, businesses, who are all, you know, 10 toes down, as I would say, for this Page Amendment and making sure that our children have a civil right to quality education. So again, I want to thank you all for being here. This is something that we've been able to do a lot, right? Even in the midst of this pandemic, there's been tons of people continuing to show up, to hear the message, to learn. And, you know, as we move forward, I want you all to know who are on here. Feel free to join us at other events, right? We at Minnesota Parent Union, we try to do a lot of educational meetings. These presentations are, are one part of that. But we understand there's a lot to dive into. So we like to take that extra time, work with parents, work with students, families, community members, to really understand the Page Amendment and help us get this thing on the ballot for our children. So I'll stop right there, but thank y'all again.
All right. Thank you, Nevada. Do you have anything to add in there or are we?
Thanks, Alana. I think like one final thing, just like in looking at this, I, I think about like the abundance that we have, that, that's Thanks, Alana. I think like one final thing, just like in looking at this, I, I think about like the abundance that we have, that, that's working towards this, this amendment. We have Justice Alan Page, we have the Fed, we have Rashad Turner, who's leading Coalition's work. We have, we have an incredible lobby team. We have an incredible communications team. We are across, like, we have tribes who are supporting us. We have local organizations supporting us. We have political leaders supporting us. And this work, I mean, I think it's, it's a long overdue. And one thing I will say is that for anybody who knows me and Alana, like, I'm sure we've crossed paths before, right? Like, the work that I do in community really has to do with, there, there is, there's an analysis that I take. And it, it is this, like, what am I doing today that will have an impact seven generations from now? And when I think about the Page Amendment and the opportunity, the true opportunity to change this antiquated 1857 language around education and bring it into the time of now and to ensure that every child in Minnesota has a right to quality public education, that is something that will change the entire state of Minnesota for future generations moving forward. And the people who are involved in that work right now, everyone on this call, every, everyone in the state that is involved in that work is going to be a part of something that is truly a catalyst for change for many, many generations. So I just, I would just like end with that. And again, Migwich, thank you. I appreciate being here.
And we certainly are glad you're here too. I don't want to talk all by myself on this here. My voice is not the one that needs to be heard. So I guess this leads us to the last part of this in that, what now? Where does this go? What do we do? How do we find out more? How do we continue conversation? How do you get involved? How do you get your questions answered? Somebody, anybody can go to answer me.
Well, I think, I mean, again, thank you. I think that Rashad and Nevada can, I guess you've already put it up there in the chat with, between Minnesota Parent Union and Our Children Minnesota. Those would be the natural places for folks to go to get more information and to get involved. Justice Page and I are, and my colleagues at the Fed are going to continue to be out there talking about why we think this is a good idea, what, what it's designed to do, what we've learned from the research and from other states. One other thing I just mentioned, many states are now watching us. Like, we, we announced this last year and now we've heard from four or five other states who said, wow, this is amazing. We want to potentially follow your lead and do something similar. So that's, that's really exciting that other states are watching. But, you know, I, I think the bottom line is get involved through our children and Nevada and Rashad are your key contacts there. But just don't forget the big picture. This creates a civil right for every child to get a quality public education. And then it says, this is the highest priority of our government. That's, that's bold.
And one thing I'd just add, since we have two more minutes, and I'm looking in the chat, I'm seeing a lot of action-minded folks, right? So I'll let Nevada share about the Page Amendment form. But one thing, as we do our educational meetings, we try to identify what we call supporters, advocates and champions. And supporters are folks who, you know, when it comes time, they're going to pledge to vote for that Page Amendment when it's on the ballot. Advocates and champions, and I'm seeing, based on the comments, I'm thinking there's a lot of advocates and champions on here right now. Folks in your areas that will be watching. But advocates and champions are folks that obviously support the Page Amendment, but also make that commitment to sort of take an extra step and testify at a legislative hearing, write an op-ed, commit to organizing their networks. So I'll let Nevada share the form or talk about the form a little bit. But we definitely have ways for folks to tap in and make sure we make this happen for our children.
Thank you, Rashad. I did put it in the chat. It is, you can link into it and, and you can like sign on. So we would capture like your email and then we have the ability to like reach back to you, like when we have different actions. We will be having action alerts around things that are happening. And we want you to engage in that and we want you to be a part of this. And I think Justice Page said this, Kashkari said this, Rashad said this, like, it is going to take all of us. It is going to take all of us. Because it is, it's a big shift for us to like, start talking about something different than just adequate systems versus like quality public education as a right for children. And so we really like, myself, I'm going to just open myself up. Like, if you want to have a conversation with me, please reach out. And we're here, we're here to help support this and to make sure this is a very inclusive statewide effort to, to get this passed.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all I have. I'm going to toss it all over to Natalie to finish us up here.
Yeah. So before I finish up, I want to give a shout out to the person that I have on the middle of my screen, Beth, who contacted me like, it seems like 10 years ago and said, hey, should we do this together? And it's just great that the, the day is actually here. Thank you to Rashad and to Nevada, to Justice Page and to Neil Kashkari for being here and for being part of that seven generation switch that we're doing here. That is a beautiful learning that we can have from our indigenous brothers and sisters who were here on this land before we were. You know, what we talked about tonight are things that are already important to every district in Minnesota or that are important to every classroom in this Minnesota, this wonderful state of ours that are important to every parent like myself. And of course, important to every student. Every student doesn't want to feel like a number. They want to feel like they are individual folks, people that really matter and that their success matters. We have that here in St. Cloud. We have that all over our state. What we don't have is the funding to do it. In many instances, we have an unfunded mandate in special education right now, and then also in our multilingual learning. And so what we're having to do is move money around to figure out how to meet those mandates, not because we have to, but because we want to. We want to have all learners succeed, but our government right now is not funding us to the level to help us to succeed. And so, you know, I, I hear those questions about, now, is this going to mean more training for teachers? Is this going to, is it the teachers that are the problem? Is it the districts? That's not what this is about, right? This is about us coming together and saying that it's a high time that this is priority one in our great state. And so we'll continue to have amazing district leaders and amazing teachers and amazing students. But what if we all came together to say that we are all going to help all students? It's not just enough for my kids to succeed, because my kids will be in the world with all kids. When we all do better, thank you, Paul Wellstone, we all do better. And that is really why we were here today. So I know some of you didn't get your, your questions answered. I love that there's still questions out there. Please reach out to some of these fine folks on the screen here via email or through their website and ask those questions and get involved, you know? Definitely from Justice Page and Neil, they're, they're leading this at a high level, but it's the boots on the ground, folks like Rashad and Nevada and local school board members like Alana and I that are really going to, to need to do some individualized handholding on this one, so we can get somewhere. So from myself and Alana and from all the folks on the screen here, we thank you for taking this first step. And make sure you reach out to any of us if you have any questions moving forward. Have a wonderful night and be safe out there, y'all.